They're not gonna have GMO corn.
And they give shots to it one time, do they really need that? Just for that, I mean, I don't know what's important, but.
You know, in Azteca down there, we grew white corn for years.
Everyone down there giving a shot. Four or five people are working there to begin with.
I have to switch back.
I got a feeling not all of them are qualified to give the chance.
Yeah, I know what. What I thought.
But we're growing non-GMO for GPC out here now. And I don't have as much problem with the corn as I would beans.
Get me that key?
Again, yeah, there we get down to me.
Yeah.
Man, you need all the help you can get.
No, I haven't signed up yet, I mean, no, they're only down to sixty-five.
Oh, you mean, oh, age-wise, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fifty-three.
It's about a minute earlier, but since it's already on, we'll get started.
Didn't even get to me, so.
Yep.
I'd rather my wife get it, you know, she's in school every day and so forth, and she signed up on the way in this hospital, but she's the same age, so she didn't qualify either.
Yeah.
Welcome to the meeting, something I'd like to do before we start every meeting from now on, I'd like to say the place allegiance. With everything going on, if we can't respect the veterans and the flags, I think we got a problem, so.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll do a real call, Dave Smith.
Here.
Matt Meredith, President, Mike Sprinkle.
Here.
Tom Schaefer.
Present.
Joanna McCracken.
Here.
Mike Myers.
Here.
All good. First thing on you. Did that just start or what?
Yeah, ready?
Oh. Forget the minutes, we're gonna go to number two.
Good morning.
Yeah, good morning, this is Matt Meredith, the county council, how are you?
I'm good, this is Paige Sandstone with Baker Tilly.
Excellent, so we'll move up to number two. Okay.
Patty, you just. Hey, did you get started, or?
Paige, we received the proposal and the council has received it and reviewed it. Do you have any comments that you wanna talk to them about, and then I guess you can be ready to answer some of their questions, is that okay? You hear me?
I don't think she could hear you.
Paige, yes, Tony, did you hear Patty?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And, and yes, I can make some comments, I believe Jason Simler was gonna be on the call, so I didn't know if he wanted to start first, is he on this morning?
Not yet.
Yeah, not yet, he's not.
Not yet, okay, well, I'll go ahead and get started then. Yeah, so we submitted a proposal to the county to do a comprehensive, long-term financial and capital plan. We have several funds that we were gonna look at with that plan, we did talk to the county auditor about what funds would be important to include in the plan. I think there were maybe sixteen to eighteen funds that were included. But what the plan involves really is to look at two years of historical information, because we wanna see where have you been, how have you performed against your budget, are you using cash reserves, what are your cash reserve levels currently? And then we proposed to project out five years. Do five years of cash flow projections. And, and really, this is gonna help in a couple different ways, one is it's gonna make the budget process much more streamlined. We'll, by preparing this plan before the budget process, we will have all of your revenues forecasted, and it's just gonna make your process much easier, because you'll know how much you can spend out of each fund while having a balanced budget. And in addition to that, we wanted to do the capital planning piece to help you determine the best way to fund some of your capital projects coming up in the future, it could be a combination of cash on hand, debt service, something of that nature, but we'll be able to cash flow that through, you know, the next five years. Going back, I did wanna mention, going back to the budget piece, by building this model, it's gonna help you make decisions such as if you wanna give salary increases or add new personnel. You can run that, those types of decisions through this model to see if they can be sustainable into the future. We do this for a number of counties, and, and they do have us updated right before budget season, and again, it just really streamlines that process and makes your decision-making a lot easier, so that you can see how that will impact your cash reserves going into the future. So that pretty much summarizes what we are proposing, the whole, you know, building the model and developing that five-year plan, we're proposing a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand. The capital piece is, is nine thousand, but really, that, you know, the more legwork you do at the county level as far as the capital planning piece, the less that's gonna cost. We can, you know, meet with department heads and help prioritize projects, but if you can do a lot of that on your own, then that will lessen the cost of, of that piece of the process. And then finally, we wanted to build in some comparative data, so we would look at similar-sized counties and surrounding counties and compare tax rates, income tax rates, assessed values, property tax levies, just to help give you a good base of comparison. So, do you have any questions for me?
I think Jason called in, I think he's listening here as well.
Oh, okay, great.
Is that right, Jason?
Uh, yes, hi.
Yeah, Jason, we have you on speakerphone now.
Okay, hi, everyone.
So, my, this is Tony, my only question was the cost. On the capital plan, I think we can do most of that, I'm just looking at the overall cost. Is there any magic eraser here?
You need to get the cost down?
Yes.
Well, yes, I mean, we can look at fewer funds, like I said, let me see how many funds we have.
Fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen.
If you can identify some funds that you do not wish to include, that's obviously gonna save on, on the cost. But I mean, again, we, we kind of identified these as being some of the very important funds, but if, if there are some funds that, that you see that you do not want to include, that, that will bring the cost down. I mean, we, like I said, we do this for a number of other counties, and this is typically the cost range between thirty-five thousand and forty-five thousand, so I would say this one is on the, the lower end of that. Uh, Jason, did you have any comments you wanted to add?
Yeah, I, just a couple, I think Patty and I talked last week, I, I think there could be some things that we could maybe take out that, in our comprehensive annual plan, we usually include some graphs and charts, just to kinda show some pictures, so it's just not all numbers. That, you know, of course, takes some time to do, we could take that out, and that would probably shave a couple of thousand dollars off of it. And to your point about the capital plan, these are kinda, well, we're gonna base it on not, based upon actual time and expense, and these amounts here are not to exceed amounts without, you know, additional approval from the board. So, it could come in less than that, and to your point about the capital plan, I know when we had our original discussion, you know, it did sound like, you know, Patty and her offices and council commissioners, you would be doing a lot of the work, getting a lot of that information to us, so that definitely could be less. If we started getting to, you know, different alternatives and scenarios of financing, that, that could maybe increase that number. But, but to your point, the more that you're able to provide us upfront, the greater that those costs will be less than what we're showing you, and those are kind of, you know, not to exceed amounts.
Okay.
I mean, I definitely think if, if you wanted us to remove the, you know, charts and graphs and some of those, you know, pretty pictures, that would definitely, you know, reduce the, the time involved putting together the report, and would definitely save some, reduce the cost slightly.
Yeah, I, I went through the one that was done in twenty-eighteen, even though I wasn't here, and the graphs and charts are pretty, but numbers are numbers, I don't know that, I don't know that that colored picture helped us any. And there are a few funds that I think can be reduced, I mean, excluded, but something we'll have to look at. Any other questions here from council members?
I, I think the only other thing that may be helpful as you're looking at this is, I know Paige assisted the county last year, and Paige, you may want, even Patty may wanna add into this, but, you know, for that process to assist the council with the budget, we had to put together, you know, revenue estimates and cash flows, and that was part of the, you know, our services for helping with the budget. That will already be done through this process, so, you know, you're kind of looking at some of those fees that you paid us to help you with the budget, those would be reduced, because we'd already done some of that work in this analysis.
Yeah, what Jason is saying is correct, I mean, we, in order to provide, you know, just an overview of your budget last year and assistance, I, we did have to do a lot of things that go into a comprehensive financial plan, obviously not to the extent of a long-term plan, but we had to estimate your revenues, at least for the next budget year, et cetera. And I think the county paid us, it might've been around five thousand to do that, well, that would already be covered under this comprehensive financial plan.
Corrective amount, not the entire five thousand, but a lot of it, because a lot of that work would be done, it's just, if there's any additional, you know, meetings and things for the budget, that would be separate than this, but all the preparation to get to that point would be covered in this report.
That's correct, Jason, yes.
So, it sounds like we could do a lot of work, legwork and.
Oh, Patty, you got any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, the statement that I think is important to remember is this is a not-to-exceed amount. So, working with them closely, and, and they're very conscientious about the goals that we have and what we're trying to do, this has been.
Anytime you get a third-party look or something get done, maybe you look at these accounts, we'll agree on that, and I think we can reduce that cost. Again, Patty said a not-to-exceed, I can see it being a benefit, it is a large amount, but I think in the end, it would be beneficial, and that's just my.
And this is not something that you would expect to see this type of expense every year.
Right, right. Because this is a high wood production, you know, we'll be able to use that and tweak it for the next several years.
And then later, you know, in the next couple of years, if you wanted to just ask a specific question, the baselines are already there, so it's much more efficient and cost-efficient to go back to them and they can just look at certain select items.
I think it's good information, I'm just.
Cost.
I think it's a lot of money myself, but.
Here's a question, I mean, Tony, you, I may have a chance to look over the eighteen report, because I saw that was before me too, I mean, is there something we can use in there as a baseline, or do we need to refresh that data?
I'm sure they'll be using that.
As a baseline.
As a baseline.
But could we?
We as in one of us do it, or?
Or somebody, you know, instead of, you know, doing a new report.
That, that has to be a Patty question, because your office is. I know you guys haven't been busy lately.
They're doing it.
No, we're not busy at all. The only question that comes to my mind is, you're paying for professional services, and that's part of the price on this, but they, they have mastered this process and the information, they have a lot of insights to other counties, and not that we wanna mimic other counties, because Davis County is Davis County, and we do things the way that Davis County does them. But just that insight and being able to bounce that off, can someone else do some of the work, I would say yes. But to that level, I, I wouldn't.
So, basically, I guess we got a couple things here, do we want to have a motion to accept this, or do we want Patty to talk to Jason and say, if she and her office were to do certain things, then how skinny could we get the price? Is that an option?
And maybe eliminate some of these.
Yeah, there's some funds here, I mean.
I mean, I don't think, like, Coon Bridge, to me, sticks out as one, I don't know why we need.
I don't like Rainy Dave.
Rainy.
And aviation.
Yeah. One of my head, too.
Questions, comments, which way do we wanna go?
Has this been beneficial to you three in the past, I guess you have the most experience here, so I would, I would defer to you guys to.
When we were getting ready to build this building, you know, we kinda wanted a better handle on what our finances and everything were. It kinda sets trends, and they didn't throw any red flags up at the time. I think that a refresher on some of these accounts probably is, is in the, doesn't hurt at all. You know, I know Tony works with numbers every day, and I don't know if he might wanna be involved in the process, or, or, you know, you, or anybody else for that matter, of, of going through some of these accounts. And, you know, maybe working on bringing the cost down for the end result that we're looking for.
And we've used Baker Tilly, and I can't remember what their name was before that.
Ambal.
Yeah, Ambal, we've used them the whole time I've been on here, and they do quality work, as far as the eighteen report, the one thing I would think of is, when the eighteen report was done, we didn't know the two thousand twenty was gonna happen, and it was such an anomaly compared to an average year, that it might be interesting to, or it'd be good to factor into how we were hurt last year, how we were affected, as far as long-range planning, because in eighteen, no one had any idea that that was going to happen. No clue and no way to even think about the future.
I think it's definitely a, you know, benefit to have them look at it, just makes us feel more secure in our decisions and stuff, so.
So, if what I'm hearing is correct, A, we would like to possibly do this, would be not at this cost, we need to go back and look at the funds, Patty and I talk to them, Patty, see what she, she and her department, maybe I can help some of these items, and then see what the cost is going to be, I don't think a month is any huge stretch here.
So, to table this until next month?
So, we're gonna table this until Patty and I get more information. And we'll come back again, sound good?
Sound good.
Would, I mean, I'm trying to think out of the box here, but if, is, is the timing right now the time that we need this, or do we need this six months down the road, or a year down the road?
Things get more back to normal, you mean, or?
Well, that's what I'm trying to, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking the question.
In my opinion, it is needed, the timing of that, it goes along with the budget process, that's why they've set this now to get this established. I think that if you do the not-to-exceed numbers here, you still have some leeway in the scope of services with them, at least from what I've been told. When you start taking funds out of it that they're gonna look at, you're limiting a little bit of your overall knowledge base for, because it is a comprehensive plan. So, what things do you need to consider moving forward in those key areas and key funds, someone mentioned the airport, well, the airport's a.
Don't let.
Has a, a certain taxing rate, to know the long-term plans, and that's been some of the things that we've talked about all along, is to establish that long-term vision and match it up with the financial capability of the county. And they are talking about, they do have some of the information from the state regarding some of the shortfalls that might be projected, they're not exact numbers, but they do have a lot of that information. You know, I don't know that it's gonna be a great cost savings to take out a few funds. I think on the last bill that we did, when we did some, I think Jason did like six funds, and we did some projections, working with some bond issues and things, and I think that bill was like twenty-three thousand, if I, if, if I recall my numbers right, but I'd have to verify that. So, you're not gonna look at tremendous savings, and it takes a certain amount of work to put together a comprehensive plan.
Any other questions, comments?
Tony, why don't you work with Patty, or whoever wants to do this, and let's, let's kinda nail this down a little closer as to what we, what we think we really want, it's kinda generic here this morning, I know the scope where we wanna be in the end, but why don't, why don't you work on that a little bit and, and bring it back to us maybe next month, and maybe we'll all be clearer on the, the scope and exactly what we wanna try to achieve here.
Very good.
Sounds fair.
Sounds good.
Right, I think that discussion, the goals, what, you as council members, what information is vitally important for you to help make those decisions, that's what the auditor's office is trying to help you have available to you.
And then, everybody look at the phones and let me know which ones you think could be a possibility of not doing. Good?
Yep.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, Patty and I will work on that. I'm sorry?
Motion to table it until next month.
Okay, we have a motion to table until we gather additional information.
So moves.
Second.
First by Matt, second by Dave, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Grant. Next up, innkeeper's tax increase, Joe Morris. You're on the clock, Joe.
I'm on the clock. Well, I have him, what, till four? Well, let's, let's call it what it is, nobody likes hearing that, that word tax, but I've got, I've got a need here and a vision and a plan. Before I get into all that, first of all, the last time I was here is when I proposed my budget, right, and that was over the summer, and, but what I wanted to do, and I did this yesterday, I just think it's important that, in my role, is to be transparent with this team here, and working with you, and showing you who we are, what we do, what our responsibility is, so if I may approach, I'd like to give you all a copy of that budget I submitted, may I?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm gonna do that now, you can just take one down, toss it around, I want you to look at it, because some of the questions I have, I've talked to a number of you.
I did hear you.
And others.
Give it a minute after that.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, you're fine, go ahead.
But I wanted you to see, again, what I proposed, to give you an idea, our, my organization is part of the tourism commission, right, and my board is appointed by the county council, you know, the county, and we have the city appointments as well. We have a board that, their role is to use innkeeper tax dollars to operate, administer, and promote market tourism throughout Davies County. Within this budget I presented, it was about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, so I wanna give you an idea where we've been and where we're at. Last, last year, and you know how our fiscal year works, it's not a calendar year, we go mid-year to mid-year, we did a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars last year in innkeeper's tax, the prior year, we did a hundred and eighty-seven, my budget this year was a hundred and eighty-seven, and I based upon that budget number, based upon where we were trending, and when I presented this to the council, we were trending numbers back to two thousand twelve, when in two thousand twelve, we did two hundred and ten thousand dollars in innkeeper's tax revenue. So, this topic of innkeeper's tax increase is not new, probably to some on this council, but it's not new, we've had the conversation in the past. The difference between those conversations in the past and this conversation today is the fact that we actually have an opportunity of having this amended to a bill that could cross the finish line. But beyond that, it's what's the vision, what's the strategy, what's the plan, but I wanna tell you my why, and then I'm gonna show you the how on that. And I think it's very important, in my role, is to address the needs of my board, what their expectations were when they interviewed me, what the plan was, and this was one of the number-one topics that came up back in, a year ago, when I sat before our executive board between the chamber and the visitor bureau, and that was, what can we do about our innkeeper's tax? Our innkeeper's tax has been in place since nineteen eighty-seven, it has never moved. We've attempted it a number of times, with no luck to cross the finish line, and, and now, and I give props to Senator Basler, I give props to him, because he, he's worked on this, and we've talked more in the last few weeks than we certainly did in the last year, and that is to help get this across the line. I'm gonna give you some numbers, and I'm gonna give you some numbers that are related to this, but some aren't related to this, because it was questions that came up in my conversations with some of you.
So, are you gonna take questions as you go, or at the end, or how do you wanna do that?
You know, this is very informal, I'll take questions as we go, I have it set on the agenda that at the end, we can do a Q and A, but certainly ask me questions.
I, I do have a question for you then, so you said it was established in eighty-seven at that five percent level, right?
Correct.
But since then, we've had additional rooms come on and those type of things, so the budget actually has, the revenue has actually gone up, that's been going to tourism, even though the base is the same, is that what you said, or is that what?
That's not what I said at all.
Okay, so how does it work?
No, no, that's not, that's what I said at all, it was established in nineteen eighty-seven at five percent and hasn't moved. Now, you are right, we, we've certainly had some growth, actually, the question you asked me was, how many rooms do we have, three hundred and two.
Three hundred and two, okay.
And that includes whether it be Gascoff, whether it be Holiday and Express, Baymont, or it could be West Boggs, one of the cabins. We have three hundred and two rooms, and I can tell you with all confidence and certainty, we need about two hundred more. And the reason we do is, our occupancy rates currently are doing well, our average daily rate, they call that ADR, is probably below general market. Now, one of the things that when we asked, I've been asked a number of times, what do our neighbors, what's their innkeeper's tax? And in fairness, that's a fair number, but what you don't see, that's not apples to apples. And the reason it's not apples to apples is because you've got other cities and other counties that charge food and beverage tax, or charge stadium tax, or charge facility tax, and you never really see it until you actually see that invoice or that receipt. So, in true fairness, I'll give you an example, let's talk Knox County, Knox County just increased their innkeeper's tax last March, twenty-twenty, to six percent, there's a one percent bump. Now, certainly, you've looked at your package, you know I'm asking for nine, four percent bump, and on average, if you say a hundred dollar room, it's an additional four dollars. Now, I'm not downplaying the fact it's an eighty percent increase at all, I'm, I'm actually emphasizing the fact that we've, if I would've had this in sixteen accomplished, or eighteen accomplished, or even years before that, in two thousand eight, we probably wouldn't even be having this conversation. Simply because my organization, our role, is to promote tourism throughout Davies County, it could be the Turkey Trot, the Davies County Fair, it could be the Garden Club event, it could be the Christmas Parade, it could be event assistance for youth sports, it could be anything that would relate to tourism, and tourism's a vague word, what's tourism? You know, it's anything that gets people to stop into one of our retailers, our restaurants, our gas stations, or one of our attractions, it could be supporting Davies County Pickleball, or Jamison Hibbs and the projects he's doing over at West Boggs, or his frisbee golf program. To me, our role is a quality of place, it's a marketing role, it's to shine light on who we are, it's supporting all the things that's great about Davies County. Now, when you look in the budget, we've allocated, and this isn't something I created, it's been in place for years, we allocate ten thousand dollars for event assistance. The maximum that you can request is a thousand dollars, it, you fill out a request form, it comes before our board, we vote yea or nay, we start doing presentations, and we support, whether it be bar review basketball for their tournament they had last weekend, whether it be Washington Youth Basketball, whether it be the Garden Club, putting a new program in, it's educational, that brings people in to look at the library, it could be, we fund the history museum, right? We give them dollars every month to promote that, and they got a big project coming up, and certainly, that's tourism, you know, they got this project coming up, they're gonna need grant assistance. And we're the only extension of this body that our, our funding comes from our innkeeper's tax, that, that's the only funding we get. Up until yesterday, I have, I mean, for this year, I can't speak for previous executive directors, but up until yesterday, our organization or our body hasn't done a formal ask from city or local or county government to get involved in things we're doing in terms of our vision. My vision is pretty simple, is to take what we're doing well now, but to also get to the next level in terms of corporate tourism, sports and recreation tourism, and to have a conference convention and tourist center. That was why I did my ask yesterday, that's why I've asked the mayor to give me a commitment, I'll go before his body, to seek those dollars, and I've asked my committee, my board, to finally step up, and I'll be honest, you know, the conversations we have over an event assistance grant of a thousand dollars is really amazing, compared to me convincing them that we're gonna have to spend a few hundred thousand dollars on investing in a tourist center. And, and, and the good news is, they want it. Now, I thought about this this morning, you know, you have those, when you wake up in the morning, you have your routine, and you have that epiphany, I had an epiphany today. And the reason I had this epiphany is because I've got the innkeeper's support, I mean, all that, I mean, whether it's, they're gonna put this. I mean, all the, I mean, whether it's, they're gonna put this in the package when we sign a resolution to do this, that I've got their support. And one of the, uh, things that was asked to me was, well, we don't want to increase this and drive people to Dubois or Knox County. And my epiphany was, let's be honest, it's not the Innkeeper's tax that drives people to Dubois or Knox County. It's not that bill, hotel bill that got them, that four dollars that I'm asking for today on average. It's all the other amenities that are there. It's the restaurant that's across the street of the new hotel. It's the shopping that's available. It's the energy, right? It's not the Innkeeper's tax. And the other thing I thought about was, the most impact on this is the very person collecting this, and that's the Innkeeper. And what surprised me was, is I've got, um, Innkeepers that, if you've ever talked to them, if you've ever been in that side, and I have been, um, the amount of dollars that they have to spend on just modifications and upgrades to that property would blow you away. Now, I didn't see the numbers you were looking at prior to my conversation, but anytime you look at big numbers, you would be blown away what those Innkeepers get charged just to change bedding, uh, what their costs are on new towels, putting granite in a room or new carpet. It's, it's, if you've owned a business and you see the difference between commercial pricing and individual pricing, right? And, and we've got Innkeepers that are going through this process now, like the Holiday and Express, they need to upgrade their facility. But for me, uh, this ask is simply because I inherited, um, a budget that we're at capacity in terms of what we really can do. But I really believe that we've got the potential, when you talk about corporate tourism, and I'll talk about corporate tourism and my why behind that.
Let me ask you one more question about the, that you're talking about Innkeeper, the Innkeepers themselves.
Yeah.
So if you have existing Innkeepers, I can understand what you said. How about, how would it affect a new hotel and a new Inn, Innkeeper? His, his costs are probably a little bit higher with the new construction, his rate, plus you got the nine percent you're talking about now on top of that. How does it affect the new Innkeeper? How would it impact a new business coming into the area, a new inn, basically?
Well, so let's look at what, you have to still go back to what our ADR is, average, average daily rate. It's still below market compared to the larger metro areas or neighboring areas. And so how does it impact them? Well, first, it's what do you do with the money, right? If we just take the money and earmark it and never do anything positive with it, it's certainly, it's another collection that there, there might be losing four dollars on that room, right?
Mm-hmm.
But if you've got, like in this case, my ask was, I have my eye on a property that happens to be located in south of town in Washington on fifty-fifty-seven, the Ponderosa, that's that vacant this whole year, and I looked at it and thought, could this be our conference convention tourist center? It's nestled right there across from Baymont. There's still an open project that hasn't broke ground on, and that's the Hampton Inn. And this body asked me about that, you know, over the summer. It's certainly a great asset to have, because from a hotel standpoint, what we don't have is conference space. And I've been asked a number of times, what about Westgate Academy? I mean, that's a beautiful space. But the fact of the matter is, that's never been the purpose of Westgate Academy. It's not...